Okay.
Where are we? The resolution? We did that, so we're, okay, discussion items, subdivision?
Yep.
Subdivision versus lot line con-
Consolidation.
Consolidation? Dr. Jeffrey Yarura.
Jeffrey's at, uh, he's still at our central roundtable.
Okay.
Yep, we're ready.
Good evening, Board. Jim Blasing, Director of Utilities and-
Deputy Director Kevin Love for Utility Operations.
Okay, um, as the, uh, as the summary explains, I think we could probably get a better picture, Bree, if we go to the, uh, uh, the lots. Before we go to the lots, the three lots and the one big lot.
Right.
Big one.
That, oh, okay.
So, what we're in front of you for is, uh, it looks like the county, in my words, is allowing, I'll call it a reversal, uh, of lots after they were approved by zoning. In this case, um, we had a, the three lots that you see were in 2005 combined in the bigger lot that you see, and this is a request to go back to the three lots. So, there is, we're just here for a discussion, but we do have some concerns, uh, here, and if, our attorney could maybe help us with that. I didn't do my homework on this too well, so, yeah.
I think there are a couple of concerns. One is, uh, if you've got this parcel where the lot lines, the interior lot lines have been vacated, so you now have a larger parcel, uh, and the county has a new procedure in its zoning resolution that it passed earlier this year, uh, to allow the undoing of the lot line vacation and basically go back to the three lots. That does provide a mechanism where someone in the situation where the larger parcel is in excess of five acres, uh, they would be required to bring water to the district, and the smaller lots may not have the same requirement. So, uh, there also is a question of whether the county followed proper procedures. When I took a look at the statute on the lot line vacation, uh, the county is supposed to make particular findings, uh, before they, uh, undo the lot line vacation. Does not appear to me that as pass, as part of passage of the zoning resolution, they necessarily made that finding, uh, but that's an issue for a discussion between the district and the county. Really, uh, in terms of what, uh, action you're asking the board to take, I'm not sure I'm clear on that, but just to advise them that this is a solution that potentially presents real complications for, uh, our water supply.
It does. And, uh, of course, this is just a discussion, so we could fine tune this, this subject matter as, as Carl explained, and get back to you either as a discussion on what we find or any other action, whether the board wants to take that or not later on.
So, when we, sorry, Bill, when we, when we say county, what, uh, what department are we actually?
PNC.
PNC.
So, has this already occurred, or this is, they're just in the process of doing this?
They're in the process.
Okay, so, I see this one page that says this process is not reversible. Lot lines may only be reestablished through subdivision process.
And that's what, uh, Carl was talking about. That was in 2005, and now they want to reverse that to allow that to go back.
And this, this lot now is more than five acres?
I don't know the answer to that. I probably can't-
I was looking forward to it.
So, what we're concerned with is that now we have one water tap, and then we go back to three, we have three water taps.
Right.
We started with-
That's part of it, yes.
We started with three water taps and went to one.
Now they want to go back.
Well, they have to pay for it, don't they? I'm sorry, they have to pay for it, don't they?
Oh, yes.
It appears to me that the larger parcel is, uh, perhaps eight point oh seven acres. The resolution on the drawing is not terrific, but that's sort of what I see.
So, what's, what's the history? Did they bring water to the, to the table since it was, when they, when they combined the lots?
I do not know the question, the answer to that question.
I don't know the answer. I would say, I would think they did not bring water since it happened before we made the policy to bring water, five acres or more.
Gotcha.
The lot lines were vacated in 2006, uh, so it's been nineteen years.
Oh, yeah, we didn't have any. We had all the water we needed in 2006.
I don't think we'll ever have enough water.
According to what we were-
According to what we were told.
Yes, we will.
I'm glad I wasn't back then.
So, I guess, have you calculated what the impact could be? I mean, if he's, if he's going to three residential lots, if they're gonna, what, what is this, what is the zoning on this, R1 or whatever the new zoning is?
I guess, uh, to answer your question, a half, is we use a half acre per tap, a three-quarter tap.
Okay.
So, again, I, you know, we're in discussion here, um, and as we see this, I think we need to do a lot more diligence that, uh, with the county as far as, you know, this reversal and how it affects Pueblo West.
Well, they certainly should be apprised of what our rules are and, and what this has the potential of doing.
Correct.
In 2006, when the applicant requested the lot line vacation, uh, there were, as you see from your packet, uh, real obvious notices saying that this cannot be undone. However, the county's change to the zoning resolution provides a mechanism that it could be undone. So, uh, that, that is the, the crux of the issue.
And there is such thing as an exfolfacto law?
That's, I, I don't think it's an exfolfacto law, but, but I think there is an estoppel question, and the question is whether the current property owner had notice of the fact that the lot line vacation was supposed to be irreversible. So, whether they actually had notice of that or whether they're chargeable with notice of that, I don't know.
Lots of discussion.
Lots of discussion, yeah. We need to, we need to, uh, dig down more on what, what they're doing, because we're not quite clear, and as Carl said, we're not, uh, quite in agreement with what the, uh, reversal is and how it affects Pueblo West.
So, what would you be looking for from us? Just, this is just information right now and-
This is information, as I said, we would like to get more information, more information to come to you, whether it be a discussion or we have enough for an action. I don't know that yet.
Yeah. Yeah, I would really question their ability to redo this one.
So, the, the current owner is Terry Kath, Kath Carlton? I'm sorry? The current owner is Kerry Kath Carlton?
My, my understanding, Director, is that the property has been sold to someone who's not Mr. Kath Carlton.
Yeah, I'm on the-
Have they listed their intentions?
No. They just want to separate the parcels.
I think that's pertinent information to, to have moving forward. I agree.
So, what's the difference between, and forgive my ignorance, what's the difference between a subdivision process and a lot line division? Is that, did I say that right?
A lot line vacation does not, uh, impact, uh, an actual subdivision of real estate. If you vacate the lot lines internally, you're creating a larger parcel. If you're going the other way, you may fall to follow the Senate Bill thirty-five, which requires, uh, an approval before you create smaller, parcels smaller than thirty-five acres.
Is that the subdivision process?
Yes.
So, the, the note says this process is not reversible, lot lines may only be reestablished through the subdivision process.
That's what it said in 2006.
Right.
However, the county has now changed their zoning resolution to provide a mechanism, not through the subdivision process, but through another process, the lot line, I forget the actual term of our-
Lot line consolidation vacation.
Right.
Is there a dated grandfather clause on that?
Don't think so.
Were the, were these documents that you guys provided from 2005, were these, uh, were these recorded?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're all stamped recorded.
Okay, so when this person-
I hope so.
Yeah, so when this person bought the property, they should have, should have read these documents, correct?
They should have been reviewed.
Total commitment?
The title company.
Okay, so they would have seen the one that's highlighted that says irreversible.
Assuming that the documents were properly recorded and the title company gave them copies of the documents. Or at least called them out as exceptions to coverage in the title insurance policy.
So, back to my original question, now that I've got the verbiage right, so, what's the difference between a subdivision process and a lot line consolidation vacation?
The lot line consolidation vacation does not require you to go through the state mandated subdivision process under Senate Bill thirty-five.
And for us, the biggest challenge with that is the water itself.
Right. Because we have to show that we have enough water to supply those lots, is that what you're saying?
During the subdivision process, you would then have to justify that there is water available to serve those new lots that would be formed from a subdivision. This mitigates or goes around that.
Okay. So, the, the owner is Terry Kath Carlton, on the signature page, right? According to that, the owner is Terry Kath Carlton.
Was, was the, as I understand it, was the owner nineteen years ago.
Oh, okay, that's, so that's the old document, that's-
Yeah, 2005.
It's dated three twenty, oh, oh five, not twenty five.
Just, just to clarify, if I understand correctly, while this is a specific issue, I think it brings the question of this process and how it could be applied throughout the district as well, not just the specific one.
Yeah, 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 I get that.
So, regardless of if there is a way to be able to enforce that that document recorded and should have been provided and says that they can't, if that is something that the zoning resolutions now allow, it does create complication, and that's where we will have to have conversations with the county.
So, would we make, make changes to our policies that say lot line consolidation vacation irreversible? All in void.
That kind of gets you in a, an odd place where we would be saying, no, you can't do it, and the county's zoning resolution says you can't.
So, what's the worst place than where we're at now?
That is where we are right now.
I, I would encourage probably have more discussion on this, because I think this is one that we'll have to get some more feedback about what's happening with the county.
I just want to entertain one more thing. So, is he, is he asking to return to the old lot lines, or is he gonna subdivide it in-
Far as I understand, yes.
He wants to go back to the original lot lines.
If he were to do what you implied and put in new lot lines, it would not be a lot line vacation-
Consolidation. Consolidation vacation.
It, it would be a new, uh, subdivision. So, I, I think it's only if you go back to what was there earlier that you would fall within this exception. I don't think you can say, well, instead of doing that, but we'd really like to put in lot lines that go east-west rather than north-south. I don't think that's on the table.
Or anyway, with the five acre lot.
But that's good observation.
Okay, yeah, let us know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you need any help with, uh, county commissioners or anything, let us know.
You're here for now to change it? Four two acre tracts.
Okay, so moving on to, uh, excuse me, let me go back. Yep, second discussion item, which is donation requests.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Breamanyoni District Clerk. I'm filling in for Katrina Peter. So, this one is, um, in re, in regards to the district has received a couple separate donation and sponsorship requests, and our overall goal is to figure out how you'd like to respond to these two requests that we have that came in that I'll discuss here in just a few minutes, and then also whether the board wishes to budget an annual amount for donations and sponsorship requests going forward, and how will those requests be prioritized? So, as I'm presenting it, try to think of those couple things in your mind, um, just because this, these do tend to come up, and we just don't have any kind of process, um, and we'd like to have that moving forward. But the first one is a Pueblo County Fair Board. We have a staff member who serves on the Pueblo County Fair Board and has requested between eight and ten thousand dollars to support the county fair. The funds could be used to provide awards to the 4-H participants or to support other events within the fair. The second one is a Steel Works Center of the West, a sponsorship request for the upcoming exhibition, A Long Journey to a New Land, commemorating the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the United States and the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary in Colorado. The exhibit is slated to open in spring of 2026 and run through December 2028. The sponsorship levels vary and are detailed, um, in other materials that we did get attached in your packet, um, that you'll see in there. The purpose of this report is to seek the board direction on how to respond to these two specific requests and to discuss whether the board wishes to establish an annual budgeted amount for such donations or sponsorship, sponsorships requests moving forward, um, while also ascertaining the order of priority as these come in, in the future. So, the board previously approved a fifteen hundred dollar donation to Steel Works Center of the West in 2020 to support their Water and Life exhibit. Since that time, no dominant donations or sponsorships of this nature have been budgeted or expended. This discussion also provides an opportunity to establish a clear process for handling the future donation requests, including whether to budget a specific amount annually. The financial implications, just to keep you all aware, at the mid-year point, the board's budget was at seventeen point two nine percent expended. Following receipt of the invoice for the May 2025 election, the percentage will rise to approximately forty percent. While this is below anticipated total expenditures, the federal, the general fund overall is being closely monitored, as several funds are trending higher than average for this time of year. The board's budget coming in under projections may help avoid a potential budget amendment later in the year. However, no funds are currently budgeted for donations or sponsorships of this nature. So, you do have funds available, but there's nothing that's been budgeted for this. So, my, again, to rewrap it, the couple questions I asked at the beginning of this presentation is whether the board wishes to budget an annual amount for the donation or sponsorship requests going forward, and if so, how will these be prioritized as a board thinking motion? And then also, how would you like me to respond to the two requests that have come through? One for the Pueblo County Fair Board, and then the second for the Steel Works Center of the West? I'm open to questions.
No.
And this is coming from somebody who's actually had discussions and requests for sponsorships in the past. You know, I was just posed a question to Metro Personnel, is this possible? You know, I, honestly, I think that, uh, if we're gonna spend taxpayer dollars on a sponsorship, it should go to somewhere in Pueblo West. That would be my-
I agree.
-my biggest, um, concern or comment, and, um, and I'll leave it at that. I'll let you guys speak.
No, I feel the same way. They're tax dollars. They should, uh, we should try to keep it in Pueblo West and, uh, at the same time, what benefit is this to, uh, Pueblo West? Their sponsorship.
So, I will, Marcos Reyes, um, had given me some information on the fair one, just to kind of give you a, a estimate or percentage of how many kids in the 4-H group come from Pueblo West. It's over thirty percent of the Pueblo residents as a whole. So, over thirty, thirty percent come from Pueblo West. So, that's, I think, why that one was brought forward, and as far as the other one that came through, Katrina Peter.
Have you guys seen, um, the City of Pueblo, uh, city council meetings? So, they get, uh, we have two of these requests right now. They get a laundry list-
I'm sure.
-of people coming in, uh, asking for money. My opinion is no now and no in the future, um, just across the board, I think for anybody. I think if you want to fundraise, go outside the government to get it. That's my opinion.
Fair enough. Mr. Potter?
I've had to say the password on this, because, um, sometimes it can get into some muddy waters when you get into donations and stuff like that, and they need donations, they could not try to raise money themselves, um, because, quite frankly, we don't have a big budget anyway, and then we look at the, the city, a lot of their problems is because they're just throwing money to everybody who asks for it anyway, and now they're dead.
I agree. I, uh, our taxpayers work hard for their money, and I don't think it's government's responsibility to give it away to nonprofit organizations or other organizations. It should be spent for budgeted items, and it should be spent wisely at that. So, I, I am not in favor of giving government money to organizations.
Would you like me to go ahead and just respond on the board's behalf when we do receive donation requests, letting them know that we won't be-
We won't be donating.
Providing any funds at this time? Okay, and I'll respond to those other two that came through then, and let them know that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need that in a bylaws or anything for future reference? I think when we do a bylaws review, probably touch on that, if we want to make something standard going forward, um, otherwise, it could be something that's evaluated case by case for board. Either could be done.
It'd still be updated case by case or board by board, but we should have something in, right?
When's the next-
I think so, too, yeah.
When's the next bylaw update?
I think we are preparing something for the end of this year and going into next, if not sooner.
Thank you.
It could also, it could also be something that's a policy that you just adopt, uh, every two years and don't have it in the bylaws.
Okay. All right, that's, that's fair. Fair, or, or they change the balance.
Next is public comments.
We have not received any public comments online. Is there anyone in house that would like to make any comments? There are no public comments.
Okay. Board member and district manager closing comments. You want to go first?
I can. So, Chris J. Hine, District Manager, um, I did, uh, real quick, if I still have it. I did want to share appreciation for everybody's patience. This week, we did reschedule our regular scheduled meeting for, from Monday to today due to a technical issue. Uh, we weren't able to do the work session, um, as we had no forum for the work session for it, because I think we had several board members who weren't able to make it, um, properly notified. Uh, I did want to encourage, so, one thing that was gonna happen at that last work session, we're actually gonna have two, um, presentations, one for the rate analysis for the utilities, and two was a mid-year report that would go over, uh, the strategic plan and the capital projects over the year and give updates to the board and the public during that. But I do want to highlight, um, those updates are going on continuously. We actually have the strategic plan as a document that's live, um, and it is able to be viewed publicly, uh, on our website, along with ClearGov, where our transparency center is for capital projects. We do routinely update those. They usually have about either a month or quarterly update, depending on how frequent that area might be. So, um, if you're not aware, or as a public member, or as a board member, um, we'll send that out this week, just to make sure you have the link, but that is something we have been sending out to make sure that you're all aware of those updates, what you're asking about Exit 108 or, um, a conversation maybe about, um, Desert Hawk, that's where we're containing a lot of that information, and we're providing that both to the public and our own internal staff. So, um, it might be good homework for, before our mid-year report in a couple weeks.
I would, I would just like to mention on the, uh, Aquatic Center, I'd like to see the, uh, the test holes and the soil samples, uh, move right along.
Yeah, actually, thank you. I have an update.
Rather than waiting till the end of the year, uh, our administrative process on all this is slowing up as it is.
So, glad you mentioned it.
I'd like, I'd like to have suspense data. I'd like, I'd like to have suspended dates on things, make sure we get things done.
To the actual architect who's doing the boring already, they got back to us actually yesterday after coming back and they're starting to schedule that. So those processes do occur pretty quickly. Sometimes you do have to wait on the other party for it, but as far as the soil analysis, that's where it's coming from.
Clarify, you reached out to the architect?
That's who ended up doing the original soil analysis for each one.
Okay.
They're going to be able to do the same ones for those two sites we identified.
Mr. Pastor Nick?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Potter, any closing comments?
Mister, Director Potter, if you're talking, you're muted.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay.
All right, now, the only thing I would have is, I know it's easy to send an email and stuff, but I would really appreciate more of, you know, somebody coming in if they have an issue and like directly talking to us about the situation and/or instead of just throwing accusations out there and emails and such. That's one of the things that is pet peeve of mine. I like to, you know, have somebody, if you're gonna address an issue, address an issue with, with, with us directly. I mean, emails are easy. It's kind of a passive aggressive attempt and you can do so if you wish, but I'd, I'd appreciate a lot more people coming in, into our meetings and actually just seeing faces. And the other thing is, is why do we, why isn't the person that owns the property coming in and asking this? And why do we have somebody vouching for this person when they're requesting this? Instead of them coming in and giving us, and then we have all these questions and then we can't even ask the person directly who's, who's part of that process.
Lot line. Vacation.
What was that, I'm sorry?
No, I was just clarifying what, you're talking about the vacation, consolidation vacation of the lot lines, yeah.
Yeah. Like if somebody wants to have their life vacated, they should be the ones coming in and, unless they have somebody covering for them in their, in their absence, but I just don't understand why we have all these, the people that are presenting something and then they're not here for the direct questions.
Good points.
But that's all I have, just a observation.
They want a bad enough show up.
Or how are we moving, I just, how are we moving along with the fire station? One.
I think we're waiting on the contract modification from the architect to bring back to the board for approval.
And I, I got an email invitation to the admin building RFP. I would like some clarification as to what that means. What, what are we just going over what we want in an RFP or has it already been decided what they're doing for that?
So the last conversation, sorry.
Because the board hasn't weighed in on that yet.
So the board gave identified individuals part of the RFP committee to be able to develop the final scope of it, which then goes out for either the board's final review. I think at the time, it was expected that the two board members were gonna contribute to the RFP, the final scope of it, and then it would go out for bid so we could start that process. If that has changed, we need to have a conversation with the board and the board member needs to bring it up.
Well, this is what this meeting is gonna be about, isn't it?
It's to finalize the scope so it can go out for bid.
So then the two board members.
The two board members are gonna be.
Represent, yes.
Keep us in check, okay?
Yes.
And that is, that is me, myself and Chris. Thank you. Thank you.
My only comment was, you know, I'd like all the community to get on that PACOGmovestheregion.com. Get on that interactive map and let's make our voices heard. Not sure to the extent that any of those projects will be, will happen, but if we don't start voicing our opinions and our, our wants and our needs, then nothing will happen surely. So please get on there, spend some time this weekend and I'll do the same. And hopefully we can light up that map like a Christmas tree.
Anything else?
How would we, just on that point, how would, how would we? Because we don't have a, we're obviously not in charge of roads anymore that go straight to the county. So how would we? I guess what's the accountability behind that as far as we put a thousand on there in the next week, which could definitely happen if people just heard you and.
That's why I asked the question, it's a good question.
And then we, and then we assume that, that PACOG is talking to the county and giving them the feedback on the roads.
So the Transportation Technical Committee consists of the City of Pueblo, County Public Works, County Parks and Rec, Pueblo West Metro Airport, Colorado City, in addition to all the Citizens Advisory Committee members. So if they're on the committee and they're looking at this interactive map, then at least our voices are heard at some point.
And that's the one that Sean's on?
That's the one that Sean's on.
Okay.
Yeah, so further follow-up there and questions for sure, but yeah, I think the more we, we voice our, again, our opinions, wants and needs, the, the better we'll be off.
It's another form of lobbying.
Yeah.
Just like the American Correctional Accreditation Association. They, they get, they get paid at the end of the road, so I, I've seen it for twenty-four years.
That's a good way to put it.
Okay, committee reports. Mr. Axworthy, Pueblo West Chamber.
So we have a lot going on in the Pueblo West Chamber. The, the chamber director resigned, so we've been hiring, we've hired a membership coordinator at this point. His first day was today, actually. His name is Israel Rodriguez, if I remember correctly. Great guy, very personable. He'll be out and about with local businesses and Pueblo businesses. Trying to talk about the different marketing packages we now have. We're in the midst of posting a new mem, a new director position that would be in charge of overseeing the chamber overall as well as helping with marketing directives and training the cog even further. So a bunch going on. We're excited.
Good. Pueblo West Events Committee, Christian.
I might have to skip one, because I don't remember what we've done. I do know we have a, I think an event coming up, Midsummer Jam or another concert series.
In the summer, something.
End of Summer Jam, I believe. Apologies, I don't have a better update for that, but I do know we went through an after-action review for the, the Fourth of July and we have a, our new events and volunteer coordinator, Allison, is doing a great job of being able to evaluate and then process for next year and anything that could change for it. So that'll be part of conversations upcoming. I think that's all I got for now.
So all right, Twenty Twenty-Six Budget Committee.
I want to update better. So we have met a couple so far. I think we've gotten all the way through parks. We've done a majority of administration. I think we've gone through admin, the board, I believe HR, and I think we have finance and we have gone through business admin. We're gonna have to move through fire, utilities and operational support. I think the only part of operational support so far we've done is the Committee of Architecture. And had conversations about that. This is not zero-based budgeting. This is looking at it as the traditional incremental base, looking at things that are majorly changing through it. As part of that is also evaluating CIP, the Capital Improvements Program for both projects and equipment. The thing that will come before the board is, I think, first meeting in September, reaming for, if not, excuse me, somewhere around there, is to be able to do a pre-presentation to our, what would normally be our proposed budget. So just for everybody's awareness, we have a deadline to propose to the board the proposed budget before October or by October fifteen. And then by statute, we're also required to actually adopt the budget by December fifteen. With that, typically what we do is the first meeting in October, we both propose it and do a presentation of the budget as it is proposed. We also do a pre-meeting just to get final guidance from board as a whole, particularly around capital projects. If there are pay increases like a coal increase, those, those big things that have impacts on the budget before we finalize that proposal, so we'll see that in September as well.
Okay. Have we had board representation at the budget meetings? Because I get that and I, but I didn't think I was on the committee.
We have not had yet and I believe it is yourself, President Vickers and Director Pastor Nick. I know there have been complications, you've shared a challenge in being able to attend at certain points.
Okay.
Have not.
Is this the one we saw Friday?
Clarification.
They're typically either Monday or Thursday, so we have one, I believe, tomorrow morning.
Yeah, so the, the other Thursday mornings I can't do.
So your Mondays and Thursdays, I know you said you can't do the Thursdays.
Mondays I can, I can do sometimes, yeah.
And I can, I get very good at, honestly, I was, didn't think I was getting, I was getting that in there or so. That's my, my bad. I should have been there. Tomorrow I can't be there, I have a dentist appointment at eight.
That's okay, as long as, we recognize we'll probably do the presentation prior to and that'll probably cover a lot of it. All you're missing essentially is going into the department budgets line by line as we talk about. Here's what they're looking at training, here's what they're looking at for maintenance costs, things that those affect. Though it's not intense as it was last year, we went through zero-based budgeting and drove several people nuts.
So why are we getting away from zero-based, did it not work?
It, it does, it's just very time intensive. So the idea of zero-based is justifying individual expenses. And then as we're looking at that year we did it, which was last year, it's, it's minor changes towards that and any big changes are being justified. So if they're looking at more than just a, you know, our expected inflation cost of something that might be in that line, then they're justifying, this is why I'm adding to this line. But other than that, we're not going back and justifying all the expenses themselves.
Okay. In my defense, whenever I get a calendar invite to something, I usually get nine. So, huh?
Really?
Yeah, it's just like, so.
You're right.
And some of them are canceled, some are, and it's just hard, you know, sorry, I don't, I don't keep track of it that closely. So I thought it was a glitch in the system that was causing that, so help.
Just gotta ask.
Okay, thank you. That, and so I never really know what's real and it's not, sorry. Where are we? Budget Committee, so now we're gonna go to announcements, Pueblo Economic Development Corporation. That's you.
Tomorrow, yeah. This is the announcement, it's not us.
Oh, it's not our report. COA Committee, August fourteenth at five thirty. I would like to put on the radar for the Committee of Architecture or for the board. They kind of delve into home occupations and into county zoning and I think it would be nice to have an update, Christian, on where they are headed and what I think we shouldn't be headed in, you know, we can talk. I'd like a discussion with the board so that they know what the committee's headed, headed for with that.
Gotcha, would you like to have the next meeting?
That'd be great. Midsummer Fest, August sixteenth at four PM at the Civic Center Park. Maybe that's the next event, huh? Fire resistant landscape class with the CSU Horticulturist, August twenty-seventh at five thirty, right here at three fifty-six South McCulloch Boulevard, Suite one oh three. The legislative barbecue at the Colorado State Fair, five PM at the Pueblo Bank and Trust Tent at the Colorado State Fairgrounds. And that is the twenty-second, I believe. End of Summer Country Jam, there's another, there's another one. September thirteenth at four PM at Civic Center Park. And then Fall Festival at October fourth at Civic Center Park at one PM. Can I cover it? Okay. Hope to see you all there. I guess we're ready for a adjournment or a recess to executive session.
Oh, man, you're gonna put on me here?
Yeah.
So I motion to recess the regular meeting and enter executive session for the purposes of twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E, Colorado Revised Statute Determining Positions Relative to Matters That May Be Subject to Negotiations, Developing Strategy for Negotiations and Instructing Negotiators. Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B, Colorado Revised Statute, Conferences with an Attorney for the Public Entity for the Purposes of Receiving Legal Advice on Specific Legal Questions for, Regarding an LOI for Land Sale and Negotiations Relating to Track Three Six Seven.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion to recess our regular meeting, go into executive session per stated statute. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Opposed, motion carries.
All right. And Mr. President, I would certify for the record that in my opinion, the matters to be discussed are proper for conversations with an attorney pursuant to twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. And at this time, I would request that the recording be turned off.